Okay, we will call the Tuesday, April 10th, 2018 Board Meeting to Order. Just a quick note, well, wait up, you can't do that, a quick note. I ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Okay, Trustee Bingham.
President.
Trustee Duncan.
Here.
Trustee Grundon.
Here.
Trustee Martenson.
Here.
Trustee Mitchell. Okay, and Trustee Saylor.
Here.
And Trustee Mitchell has an excused absence tonight. If you would please join me, we'll rise and have the fudge and papers. And I ask you to stay standing for brief moment of silence to honor those that paid the ultimate sacrifice for them. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to our political justice, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much, please be seated. Okay, Chair Luntertain, a motion to approve the minutes of previous board meeting. Second, motion by Trustee Grundon, second by Trustee Bingham. Any discussion? All those in favor, say a clap of a high and eye. Post? That motion carries. You guys pause it over here. Usually that's your approval of the so.
I'll try to be quicker.
Thank you, Mr. Bingham. Thank you, sir. Okay, are there any public comments out there at this time, or would you rather wait for a particular agenda item?
I won't.
Mr. Norby.
Yes, I have comments on the short-term rental ordinance. I can wait until this is done.
Okay, I think it's more appropriate, we'll let you have your say, and you can ask a question of the Board on that, but we will not get into discussion, okay? We will address your question, and then that'll be it. Mr. Solberg, Mr. Allness, and Mr. Williams, unfortunately, a maybe doesn't cut it. You either will or you won't. So if you say yes, you don't have to speak, but I will consider these all yes, okay? Alrighty, President's Report. I have two pages worth of notes for tonight. First of all, everybody got their recent copy of March Municipalities Magazine? I just wanted to point out that there is a real good article in there which deals, of all things, of short-term rentals. Of course, we're dealing with that tonight. And also, an article on the Board of Review dealing with property taxes. And our Board of Review will be held on May 17th from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. in the Municipal Building. I encourage all of you to please make note of those articles and read them. Also, the League is sponsoring the Local Government 101 Course. They have added one for September in Stevens Point, date and time to be determined yet. Tiara, you went to that over-greave bay with Sue, and I highly encourage all of the trustees to make a point to go to those. And anybody with continuing education credits, they usually do have something for that also. And I don't know, Mike, if you're interested. It's usually geared for the elected officials, but certainly you can go. And they have the Municipal Administrators Convention coming up. I think it's in August, you might want to look at that. The next thing I would like to mention, the great job that the Fire Department, under the leadership of Chief Arndt, did in the process with the new fire truck. It was a very positive discussion, especially from the last Public Safety Meeting when things were discussed. All the criticisms were constructive. There was nothing about, well, he said this and she said that type of thing. So Chief, I just wanted to commend you, and please relay that word to your committee that studied the subject. I was totally impressed, and I'm not just saying that. Thank you. And then a note for Wisconsin Rapids Community Media. Next week, they will be recording the Board Meeting for, we do all of our reorganization committees and whatnot. And I'd just like to say, this is the second year now, it'll be start of year number two. And rumor has it that Mr. Jesse Austin will be a cameraman again for another year, so that makes me very happy. Jesse, thank you very much, you're doing outstanding job. Just a comment about the First Amendment and that, and making sure that we do everything on our shirt and coat sleeve. I think in the past year, this Board has given a good example that we want engagement, we want discussion, and when we haven't, we want to do everything right. So if you think that we might not be up to stuff on certain issues, I would certainly hope that those in attendance, or that will watch this on WRCM, our phone numbers are all listed on the webpage, which Trustee Saylor and Kim Holcomb have done a heck of a job. A lot of information on there. And our numbers are there, give us a call. If it's in October during duck season, I will get back to you. Be a little busy in the meantime. And then also, the distinguished gentleman sitting over to my left, Mike Corman, is our new Village Administrator. We're glad to have you, Mike. I'm sure we'll have some good discussions as we go on, the Board and the stuff. But I appreciate your outgoing personality, and I've received comments from people in town, so we like to welcome you.
Yeah, everyone's been very welcoming, lots of people stuck in.
Good.
It's been great.
Good. And if you ever find a good crappy spot up on Shell Lake, let me know.
There's a property for sale.
Pardon, ma'am?
There's a property for sale up there.
You're trying to get rid of me, and I know that. Alrighty, enough for me, I've talked long enough. Committee reports, we'll go to the Airport Commission, and Trustee Martenson, please.
Okay. The Airport Commission met on March 1st, and at that particular meeting, they had an Airport Manager's Report. Airport Manager Sickler presented his February Report. He relayed that that month, his focus was primarily on planning development projects. He provided an update on the plans to crack, build the 220 runway and taxiway, reconstruct the 1230 runway this spring, and the construction of the parallel taxiway aid in 2019. He also provided an update on the state aid projects, which is to be constructed fall of 2018 and spring of 2019. They discussed hiring part-time seasonal employee. And in old business, they discussed the capital equipment items to include purchase of a zero-turn mower for the price of $10,896. New business, they talked about snow removal procedures and expectations as they move forward, and discussed how to improve the snow removal and procedures for next year. And hopefully, there won't be much more that we have to do with that this year. So that was the March 1st meeting. They did review the financial reports as well. Other than that, that was about it. For the March 15th meeting, they went into a closed session, and that information, it's obviously discussed in private. So I will make a motion at this time to approve the minutes of the Airport Commission.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Martenson to approve the March 1st and March 15th 2018 Airport Commission Minutes. Second by Trustee Duncan. Any discussion?
My second was a fast one.
Did I mention your second?
Yes.
Oh, it was a fast one, yes.
Yes.
Sorry. I thought I was hearing voices, but I wasn't.
Your catcher.
Any discussion outside of me not hearing Mr. Duncan? Hearing no requests to speak, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post? The motion carries. Cert committee, Chairman Bingham.
The Streets Infrastructure Recreation and Cemetery Committee met on March 20th, 2018. There were no public comments at that particular meeting. Ben Martenson updated me on the Port Edwards Baseball Association work on the baseball fields, putting up a scoreboard on Field 2 and another dugout on Field 3, and that is at their cost of the Port Edwards Baseball Association. We opened proposals for a new truck, we received three, and in a meeting tonight, upon review of the specs, and we took the low bid, it met our specifications. The committee recommends that, to the Board, that we approve a quote from V&amp;H Ford for 2004 F-350 for $30,670.
Motion by Chairman Bingham.
Second.
To approve the V&amp;H quote for the 2018 Ford F-350 for $30,670. That was seconded by Trustee Duncan. Anybody wishing to speak on this motion? Hearing no requests to speak, all those in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post? That motion carries.
We also had a summer help update. We have two returning, we bring in three summer help students for the summer. We had two returning, and we did post that. I have not received an update. Mike or Dell, have we received some?
We have received applications, yes. Okay. No, I'm not sure.
Okay, which is good. Okay, thank you. And that will be taken care of by Dell. Okay, some update. The brush pickup started on 3/21, then it went back to snow removal shortly after that. Who knows when the next brush pickup will happen, because they'll be blowing snow, it looks like, a couple more times.
July.
July. Yeah. Thank you. Jason Leverance from the Streets Department will start on the Wells on May 20th. He's been shadowing Jim Leiser, who will retire his last day of June 1st. There was a question on Streets that aren't posted, load limits are off unless regulated by the Village. The Village could follow the state's limit timeline, but that will require an ordinance, which we don't have at this particular time. Okay? We're in the process of hiring process for Public Works employee. We will be interviewing five applicants for that position. That is open as a result of Mr. Leiser's retirement for labor on April 25th. We'll be interviewing five. Didn't receive any correspondence to the committee, and what we've done, what we did, we took a survey for Splashpad interest at the polling place and online. Thanks to Eric for his work on that, and he's going to compile the information, and at the next cert meeting, we'll review that particular data. With that being said, I would ask that there be a motion to approve the minutes of the Cert Committee from March 20th.
Motion by Chairman Bingham, and second by Trustee Duncan, to approve the minutes of the Cert Meeting. Is there any discussion? Hearing no request, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post? That motion carries. Planning, Property and Information Technology, Chairman Martenson.
The Planning, Property Insurance and Technology Committee met on March 27. We discussed, we had a resident to express concerns about the Village's snow removal policy. We listened to that conversation, and there is going to be a review policy regarding snow removal and notice to rental individuals, as well as property owners, so that will be discussed at a later date, later meeting. We had a presentation discussion of the update on the BMI property. Scott Harrington gave an update on the public hearing that was held on the BMI rezoning and the recommendations of the Planning Commission, hoping to have an amended developer's agreement ready by May or June for the committee's review. We received an Opportunity Zone grant, and will be participating in a new market equity project. Both of these will be advertised on the Village's website when we have more information. There was a discussion and recommendation on the short-term rental ordinance. Laura Lyfer, who has been working for the Village, explained the ordinance and pointed out that you can only regulate when rented for more than seven days per year. With that being said, I would like to make a motion to approve the short-term rental ordinance.
Motion by Chairman Martenson to have a second.
Second.
Second by Trustee Grundon to approve the short-term rental ordinance. We have that. And I would ask, any discussion? Mr. Norby.
Thank you.
If you'd step over to the podium, you'd appreciate, that way the camera can.
Absolutely. I made notes so that I would breathe, so that's why I'm sucking my breath, so. My name's Patrick Norby, I'm caving on 270 Euphrate Road. I've been renting it on a short-term basis since fall of 2017. I believe I'm the only person in the Village currently operating a short-term rental, or at least I haven't been able to find anyone else doing it. Since fall of 2017, I've rented my cabin a total of 15 nights paid, and involvement two-night stays or less. I'd like to speak to the short-term rental ordinance being proposed, and the consequences of passing it. I think it only affects me, as far as I know. As someone who only intends to do this on sort of a selected, limited rental, the ordinance is going to make the process burdensome enough where I'm going to have a choice between discontinuing it altogether, or turning it over to some sort of property management company. And that detracts from the personal nature of home rentals. I think they're unique, and they're different from a resort or from a hotel. I've been really surprised at how respectful my guests have been, how the conditions left the property. And I think that's because of the personal nature, and I think that that ordinance is going to put that in jeopardy and make it either not at all, or something that's more of a formal business. I have a couple requests. Ideally, the Board would realize that this process is a nine-page ordinance or in search for a problem to solve. I can perceive a problem, and you would vote no on this and not pass the ordinance. But I figure that's probably pretty unlikely to happen, so I do have a couple other suggestions I think that could make it more workable for everyone. One would be to allow the owner of a single property that rents for a short period of time, or sort of select, maybe 30 nights or less, in a calendar year, be exempt from the ordinance. And that's not to say that they would be unregulated. The county currently does an inspection of short-term property rentals and licenses them. That's a process I went through in the fall, and it's fairly painless, and that would allow people to just have one place that they use themselves, and they want to let some other people use it a couple nights a year, operate without having to do ordinance on top of it. And then you keep that personal field. And the second request is to allow some sort of a grace period, if we enact the ordinance, to give me a chance to, one, honor commitments that I have for the summer, as well as then decide if I'm even going to continue on in the way to have any ordinance passed. I'd be happy to answer questions about what I've been doing. Other than that, I thank you for your time.
Can you, Board of Representatives, direct a question to Mr. Norby? Michael, I'd approve you. Oh, I'm sorry. Trustee Martenson.
Thank you. How many commitments do you have for the summer?
I have one. I have a retired couple from Arizona, wants to spend four weeks up here visiting family, and I would hate to put them out.
And when?
It's July, mid-part of July, August, and that's an own commitment.
So for the continuous four-week period, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Do you have a written agreement with them, or any kind of deposit or anything?
Yeah, I have a deposit, and I have a verbal agreement with them. That isn't to say that I can't return it and call it off, but I would like to have a grace period to be able to finish up before I commit to deciding.
Trustee Grundon.
What about the ordinance would make that not possible, that particular commitment?
Oh, if you were to pass it now, I'd have to jump through the hoops and get a property manager, get the inspections done. I suspect that that's not really in place yet, and I don't know when this would take effect, and when I'd have to be compliant. So all I'm really asking for is that I not have to be completely compliant until the end of the year, just because I don't know how long it's going to take.
Trustee Duncan.
The only thing I can say on this is that, again, the situation calls for it. So not the Village's attorney, but I still am an attorney, and technically, if he has a contract that predates the ordinance, I don't think we have the ability to cancel it out. I think that his contractual rights supersede the implementation of the ordinance, so we at least have to honor that contract before it goes through. It's a big, it's post fact, which, and I consider this note that I have to skate and swear to uphold the Constitution of the United States, and that's in the Constitution, but you can't pass repressive laws.
Did you hear something? Any other trustee? Okay, I'm going to ask you, Mr. Abst, to venture in towards Trustee Duncan's comment, and then also, I've asked him to prepare a little brief for his views on the ordinance itself. Mr. Abst.
Well, I guess first regarding Trustee Duncan, there, it's really circumstantial whether it's considered a taking. If this would be considered a property right, then I agree, it would definitely be a taking. To be honest, this hasn't been an issue that's been put to me, and I can't say for certain. Certainly, there's potentially a risk that the Village would be exposed to some liability, although I imagine that that would be limited by the extent of Mr. Norby's actual losses in this case. As far as the, some of the other specifics of the ordinance, well, generally speaking, and I think maybe a lot of this was covered last week, or two weeks ago when I was gone, so I'll be very brief. These short-term rental ordinances are becoming more common around Wisconsin, with the reasoning seeming to be that there's, there are communities that want to either resist the Airbnb phenomenon or what in the like of just renting out houses or even rooms on a single-night basis, or the kind of weekend cabin type situation that Mr. Norby is talking about. As far as whether, I mean, I've reviewed the ordinance itself, there isn't anything in the ordinance that violates what state law permits now, so the, with the caveat that Mr. Duncan's questioned, that I'm not able to answer that tonight to anyone's satisfaction, probably, without looking into that specific issue. The ordinance could be passed and is legal upon being enacted. Now, there's nothing to say that, I mean, the motion can be amended to allow for a grace period in the implementation of the actual ordinance, if the Village were wanting to do that. Otherwise, of course, the same other, the same other options under Robert's rules apply, such as laying the motion on the table, sending it back to committee, and so forth. As far as any of the other issues that Mr. Norby had mentioned in terms of exemptions, that would require a modification of the ordinance itself, and couldn't be done at this meeting. We'd have to go back, and that probably would require having to go back to committee. So as far as the, as far as the rental ordinance goes, the only thing, other thing I cannot speak to is the nature of any questions that were raised in the meeting when I was out of town two weeks ago. So if there was anything there that needs to be discussed here, I can't speak intelligently.
Thank you, Mr. Abst. Anybody else that requested a chance to speak, would you like to speak now?
No, I'm saying that.
Oh, I just had a question.
Oh, yeah. Okay, as of now, everything will be back on the table, okay? So thank you. Trustee Duncan.
Is, is it possible to amend the ordinance so that there's a date that it takes effect, instead of it being immediate, that you could amend it to take effect at some point in the future?
Certainly, it could be amended. I mean, the ordinance itself, amending the ordinance itself at this time and at this meeting?
Yeah, I don't care. I'm just.
Well, in terms of, the ordinance itself can't be amended without having to be published, again, but if the, if the, if there were to be a decision to amend the motion to call for the ordinance not to be, not to be put in place tonight, or to be delayed in its implementation, since there isn't actually a date listed in the ordinance, it was intended to be effective immediately, so it can be adopted for, I mean, we can, there are options as far as that goes. But it really, the easiest way is probably to, if it's not going to be passed tonight, to probably refer it back to committee.
Any other trustees?
As I understand it, the situation that presented to us is that there's going to be a four-week period where it's going to be rented to the same person, which would not really fall under the new ordinance. But the situation that was brought to us now is the fact that providing all the information and getting everything else in order, so that you could have the individual or family rent for that four-week period. Is there any way that we could possibly allow him to rent it out, being that he does have the agreement? In all fairness to the family that's going to have it for four weeks, they've made their plans for the summer, and can we, is there anything we can do to allow that and still pass the ordinance?
You'd be talking about a waiver.
Of some of the other items. I mean, I'm certain that there's some things that could be done, maybe, you know, finding an individual to manage the property for that period might not happen.
Most of the requirements in the ordinance cannot, don't have a provision for being individually waived, with the reason being that, everything on a case-by-case basis, there isn't really a need for an ordinance anyway. I mean, you can, you can be concerned about precedent, perhaps, although this being a unique situation might be different, but I think that's probably one of the less efficient ways to go about it. If, I mean, it would be just as easy to delay the implementation than, I mean, I think then I'd be concerned about the Village taking responsibility also for some things that are, I don't know that it's, I think there's a potential liability issue with benefiting individual property owners to the exclusion of others.
Eric, Tiara, John? Anything to say?
I'm sorry, you know, I'm for, you know, I don't like, like, the way I said, you know, this family's already committed, you know, they're coming up here for four weeks, it's a long time. If we do decide to delay it, or whatever, and it does, I mean, if we do pass it with a delay in there, that you can't, that you would not be able to book more time in there with other families, saying that we have a contract now, and it's not going to give them until then, you know, this would be like a one-time deal, so. And the other thing is, is I appreciate Mr. Norby and the rest of the residents over there, I mean, you guys are actually working together. I mean, I've been a part of some things where some words and fists and stuff have been, not fists, but, you know, harsh words have been said, because one way feels strongly about one thing, and the other group feels strongly about another thing, and I just appreciate you guys being sympathetic and working together on this. So, that's all.
Thank you. Well, as far as the discussion going, if I'm understanding properly, it's either sent back to committee or amended table, and situations like that, in my years of experience, I think it's always best to send it back to committee, because amendments sometimes, that's just my observation presiding at what's said so far. So whatever you folks, your pleasure is to proceed as passage, or to send back to committee.
Well, just send it back to committee. Oh, just send back to committee.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by trustee Saylor. We're understanding that we have a motion already and a second to approve the ordinance, but we'll first be voting on the sending back to committee by trustee Duncan, second by trustee Saylor. On the send back to committee, is there any discussion? Does that, does that leave him and Limble? I mean, the committee could bring back the same, I don't know, the committee could bring back the same thing and then we're right back to square one. So it really doesn't answer your question, does it?
No. But it's, it's... Or is it answered?
The ordinance is not an effect, so it doesn't affect Mr. Norby at this point, so. Okay, I just, that was just my question. I didn't want to leave him hanging.
And I'll just make one comment. My motion is not for some ill-fated idea of trying to destroy or eliminate or bury this ordinance. It's just, we're trying to do something right. All the property owners and all the stakeholders.
I do think, I do think we're going in the right direction because it's also going to give council a chance to address your questions. And I think as we found out with fire contracts, that was good we did that. So, without objection, Mr. Olmos?
So if he's got a customer through August, this one going, that one wouldn't be voted till August?
No. They will vote to committee at their next meeting, which will be the end of this month. If that's what's set next, we get the organization meeting. And then from there, it will come back to the board with the committee's recommendation, the attorney's recommendation, and then we proceed from there. It will be, it will be brought back to the board for a vote long before August.
I'll let it happen next month.
Next month. So, any more discussion on the sending back to committee? Hearing no request to speak. All those in favor of sending back the motion to send back to committee will signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Both? It goes back to committee. Thank you, gentlemen. And if you, after next week's organizational part of the meeting, then the official date, which I presume will still be on the usual fourth Tuesday, but it will be posted, so.
Mr. President, what is the process now, going forward for this thing? There's a meeting to set the agenda, the next planning meeting, is that clear?
The, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's going to be at the next PIT meeting, which we'll know next week. This item will be addressed specifically in regards, I presume, to Mr. Trustee Duncan's concerns. The attorney, he'll have to either write a nice little writing or be there, you know, imparted that discussion on what you thought. And then from there, the committee will send her back to the board.
So the planning meeting is next week then?
We won't know until, next week is the organizational meeting. That's when the official PIT meeting will be decided.
Okay, and the PIT meeting, that's the planning and...
You got it. Planning and progress.
And then that will come later in the month, the actual plan?
More than likely the fourth Tuesday.
And then, then depending on what that committee decides, it will be referred back to the board?
Right. And that will be in main.
Okay, thank you.
All righty. Anything else? Chairman Martenson?
No, I would just like to, at this time, a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion, second. Motion by Chairman Martenson, second by trustee Bigum. Approve the minutes of the meeting. Any discussion? Hearing no request to speak. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Both? Motion carries. Thank you, ma'am. Public safety, Tierra or, who's my other public safety? Dana?
Yeah.
Gary, you want to?
I want to, but I will.
Not paper scissors otherwise.
I was there and I think that I won't put you on the spot that way. We met on March 22nd. There were no public comments, no chairman comments. We met over at the fire department. Chief Iverson reviewed her monthly report. Chief, I'm sorry, I forgot that I was going to be asked to do this. Anything on the staffing update, how that's coming along?
One of the third timers submitted a resignation.
Okay. And then also, anything on the squad car? What's the status?
So, lax assumption, my guy, it's within the next weeks.
Okay. There were no other items brought before the committee. The fire department provided their monthly report. Then we had the presentation of the fire truck proposal, followed by questions and discussions. President Zerflu made a motion to suspend rules to open conversation about proposed purchase of the new fire truck. There was engaging conversation and opportunity for questions and answers. Chief Arnt explained the cost associated with the new fire truck. He expressed his commitment to exploring any cost-saving options and reporting back to the committee by April 6th. And we did get that forwarded in our emails from, or Patrick. Was there, did I understand it right from Sue? We could, we were looking for a trade-in value, but they don't provide one?
Yeah, there's a trade-in on fire truck. Do you have to sell it or...
So any idea what the value might be?
It depends where you go. I've got feelers out right now. The salesman from Darley's putting out the word. Pittsville's fire chief's putting out the word. And if that doesn't work, then we always have the Wisconsin surplus auction site sold.
Correspondence received, Chief Iverson received, a citizen that received help when she was locked out of the car and expressed her appreciation that our chief and our police department offered that as an option, so that was once a year. We didn't have anything for agenda items for the next meeting. Any other items brought before the committee? Chief Arnt also invited anyone that liked to see the fire engines that the village currently has during the inspection. He explained different facets of each truck and different options that the fire department hopes to have on the new engine. We did not set our new, our next meeting date. And so I would ask for a motion to approve the minutes of our committee meeting.
Second.
Motion by acting chairman Grunden, second by trustee Duncan to approve the minutes of public safety meeting. Any discussion? Hearing no request to speak. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Both? Motion carries. Chairman Martenson, finance and human resources, please.
Thank you. The finance and human resources committee met on April 5th at 5:00. We did have some discussion regarding the applications that have been received at, so far, for the village crew position. At that time, there were 14 applications. And as I understand, we now have over 50 applicants. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you. So that, we had a very good response to that. The closing date for the submitting of applications was on April 6th. So we'll be reviewing those and moving forward with that. Other than that, we reviewed the monthly bills, journal entries for the previous month and the financial reports. And at this time, I would like to make a motion to approve payment of the bills.
Second.
You said second?
Yes, you said second.
I gotta wear my belt on this. Motion by Chairman Martenson, second by trustee Duncan to approve payment of the bills. All those in favor?
Aye.
Both? Motion carries.
And I'd also like to make a motion to approve the journal entries of the previous month.
Second.
Motion by Chairman Martenson, second by trustee Duncan to approve the journal entries from the previous month. All those in favor?
Aye.
Both? Motion carries.
Trustee Mitchell did update the committee on the courts received for the new fire truck. And those will be reviewed, obviously, at future meetings by the safety committee. And at this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the committee meeting.
Second.
Motion by Chairman Martenson, second by trustee Duncan to approve the minutes of the FHR meeting. Any discussion? Hearing no request to speak. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Both? That motion carries. Unfinished business? I have none. I don't think we left anything out there to bring back today. I have nothing on new business. And contraption report?
No.
Nothing for, I had either, all right. Okay, the committee calendar, as I said, will be set next week. That will also be with the changes that there may be in committee membership, chairmans and the like. We will also have a rebriefing, so to speak, on the proper procedures of agendas. We do have timelines that must be met by the committee chairs to get stuff on the board agenda. And we are not going to give any permission to forget about the timelines because we end up revising agendas many times and meeting lists many times and it just does not look good. Personally, that comes true in my opinion. It lets us, I think some people think when it's the fifth revision on a meeting sheet that we don't know what we're doing. So, and I think we know what we're doing.
When is that organizational meeting?
It's Tuesday.
Yeah, Tuesday. The agenda will be posted on Friday morning, correct?
Yeah.
Mike, you have anything?
Just like to say to everyone in Port Edwards, thank you for the warm welcome. People have been pouring in and there was some nice attendance tonight. And I'm really looking forward to my time here in Port and it's been great so far.
Double? Chief Iverson? Chief Arnt? Okay, the last thing on the agenda, so trustee Saylor and I can go home and watch the Yankees play the Red Sox, is a motion to adjourn.
Both?
Second.
Second. Motion second.
Because somebody else seconded the motion. Second by trustee Grunden. He's not adjourned.